Welcome to the Monday, March 28th, regular city council meeting for the city of Bella Vista. To begin, we'll start with an invocation of pledge allegiance and then we have a special event. So Pastor Liz Wagner, if you'd lead us, please.
Let us pray. Thank you, dear God, for the blessings of this day, for the cool crisp morning, for the warming sun, for the fragile blooms of the Bella Vista daffodils. We thank you, God, for the beauty of your creation, particularly for this area of northwest Arkansas and our village of Bella Vista. We celebrate the natural gifts of this area and the people whom you have called here from the vast regions of the United States with all their talents and complexities. We thank you for the dedicated members of our city council, our mayor, and the staff who have graciously accepted your call to govern the inhabitants of Bella Vista. Inspire their thoughts so that challenges become opportunities and change becomes a blessing. Guide their decisions tonight and in the days to come. We pray in the assurance of your strength, grace, and abiding love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special event this evening, and that is to designate the city of Bella Vista as a Purple Heart City. And to start it off, I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas the people of the city of Bella Vista have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Bella Vista who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas many citizens of our community have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force, construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. And whereas March 28th, 2016, has been officially designated as the day in Bella Vista to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter A. Christie, Mayor of Bella Vista, hereby proclaim Bella Vista as a Purple Heart City, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy. From the Military Order of Purple Heart to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gentleman standing to my left, your right, are all recipients of the Purple Heart. And trust me, this is not one that any of us went looking for. It's by happenstance. But may I ask that all veterans stand and be recognized for a moment as well? Mayor Christie, members of the city council, veterans present, and residents of the great city of Bella Vista, Arkansas. As you heard Mayor Christie state when he was reading the proclamation, the Purple Heart is specifically a combat decoration and is our nation's oldest military medal. It was created by General George Washington in 1782 and originally known as the Badge of Military Merit. He first awarded it to three enlisted soldiers at Newburgh, New York, but unfortunately it faded from use shortly thereafter. In 1932, the award was reestablished by the President of the United States, Per War Department, General Orders III, and renamed the Purple Heart. The criteria for awarding stated that it will be presented to members of the US Armed Forces who are wounded by the hands of the enemy and instrument of act of war, or it will be awarded posthumously to the next akin to those who were killed in action or died of wounds received in action. In 1973 and again in 2015, the criteria was amended to include US servicemembers who are wounded or killed by attacks or acts of terrorist groups against the United States or in countries friendly to the United States. The heritage that the Purple Heart Medal represents is sacred to all of us who understand the price paid to wear it. In 1992, the Purple Heart Trails in Cities Program was established with the purpose of creating visual reminders of those who have earned the Purple Heart Medal. If you travel throughout the United States, you'll see, you know, Purple Heart highways. You'll see monuments. And that's what that is to do, and that's been in all US states and our territories. So today, on the 28th of March of 2016, I am going to have my department commander, Vess Lawbaugh, present to the city of Bella Vista a plaque designating it as our 21st Purple Heart City.
Mayor, it's a pleasure to present this to you. We appreciate the service of veterans here in Bella Vista. We know you have a lot of them here.
And at this time, Patriot Ray Pointer of Chapter 460 out of Fayetteville will present Mayor Christie and Mr. Jerson a Military Order of Purple Heart lapel pin for all their efforts into making this event happen this evening. He's right behind you. And I would also like to thank the veterans present for your service, your and the sacrifices that you've made. And I want to thank the city of Bella Vista and its residents for supporting all veterans who have served our great nation and for this special tribute to those who have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal. Thank you.
As Chuck mentioned, some of the people who received, in fact, a great number of them had received the Purple Heart Medal, are killed in action or die because of wounds received in action. Those of us here are managed to survive. However, a lot of them are in heaven right now. And they argued down here on earth. You had sailors that thought that their service was the best, soldiers that thought their service was the best, Marines the same way, and they had a lot of quarrels and fights here while... But the same thing happens in heaven. And they... There was a Marine, a soldier, sailor, an airman, and a Coast Guardman. We're all arguing one day, and they went to St. Peter to get this thing defined, which is the best service. And St. Peter said, "I really can't make that decision." He said, "I'll have to turn that over to my boss." And he came back a little later, and he had a written proclamation, somewhat like the one the mayor had here. And it said, "Dear servicemen, the Army has a service longer than any other service." And they have distinguished themselves in Europe, in Asia, all over the world. And they have been very courageous. They've had generals such as MacArthur and Eisenhower. Eisenhower went on to become a president. They've had some great officers and great enlisted men. The sailors, they told them without ships, in most of the wars that we have participated in, we couldn't have gone where we went with the Marines and soldiers. We couldn't have provided the naval gunfire to support them. With the Air Force, they said, "You've completely changed things." When we developed the airplanes, and without you, we wouldn't have won the war in Japan. And the Coast Guard, they said, "With you, we would not... Not only do you serve during wartime, but you serve during peacetime." And with the Marine Corps, they said, "You guys served us in Bellowood during the First World War, in the Pacific, in Vietnam. All of you have demonstrated courage." And he said, "It's rather difficult to say which one is the best. We say all of you are great." Signed, God, Sergeant Major, United States Marine Corps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on now with the roll call.
Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to citizen input. We may not get through all of them. I would remind you that 30 minutes has been allotted for public participation, and each member will be timed and limited to three minutes. I would also ask that upon speaking to city council, that the member shall first state your name, followed by a concise statement addressing the subject of concern. And please note that repetitive comments shall be avoided. This applies to comments made at previous meetings as well. And all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any particular member of the city council. We had Chuck Atkins, but I believe he has already spoken on behalf of the Purple Hearts. We'll go on with Jerry Moyer, please. Mr. Moyer?
Roger Norbeck, 61 Portsmouth Drive. The reason I came tonight is because I picked up the weekly Vista paper last week, and I saw a comment in there that sizes had been deleted for accessory buildings. And that kind of made my hair go up on the back because we've had some very large ones built in our area, like 800 square feet, 1,500 square feet. Pretty ridiculous because we're supposed to be a residential area. Well, maybe you all will take the wind out of my sails because I am speaking to some of you, and from what I understand, you're going to discuss a proposal tonight that may make people a little bit more at ease, except for those that are already living next door or across the street from these huge buildings. People, I've talked to a lot of people, and they are furious at having the lot next door to them completely filled with a huge building, and it's not a residence. It's somebody's storage building, somebody's farm building. Totally inappropriate for our village. You know that if you were out with your spouse looking for a house to live in, you wouldn't say, "Let's go to Bella Vista and either buy a lot or buy a existing house, and we'll live there." But first of all, we have to look for someplace that has huge storage buildings, huge farm buildings, and that's where we want to live, right next door to them. It really defeats the purpose of advertising Bella Vista as a place to live because people don't want to live next to huge storage buildings. I hope that what is going to be proposed is seriously considered because it sounds much more reasonable. And the rest of my hair-raising talk, I'll wait and see what you have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Norbeck. Sandra Norbeck?
Hi, we're going to push right time.
Alrighty, thank you. Bill Schoilen?
Same way.
Alrighty. Jay Adams?
I think Jay was with the...
Was he with the Purple Heart?
Yeah.
And so is Renona?
I think so.
Alright. Dennis Temkins? I think he may be Purple Heart as well.
Oh, gosh.
Clem Jones?
Clem Jones? Apologies if I haven't got it right. I guess he's there too.
I provided a sign. My name is Donna Meyer. I live at 85 Dogwood Drive. I'm concerned about the Dogwood Development sign over here on the wall to define what ambiguity is, and I will use the word ambiguous. I have a question. First of all, thank you for serving. I have several facts that I would like to tell the board about. Fact number one is our sign that we have when we enter Bella Vista says 26,461. On that date, that's what it was. Today, it would be ambiguous. Fact two, we had a physical count done on Dogwood Drive of vehicles. It was given to the board. Several people left it laying and didn't acknowledge it. In our workshop that we went to on Monday last week, Chris had some sort of analysis count from a computer, and it does not define what an actual count is. Fact three, there were some boundary lines discussions, and I have no idea what you guys were talking about because it was definitely unclear, and there was no handout or visual aid for us to compare. So that's ambiguous to me. Fact number four, if there's an ambiguous thing going on about boundaries, where are the clear deeds and titles that Cooper has had to be able to find and use for over 60 years? Land is always owned by somebody every second of the day. So do we have squatters, or is there tax invasion going on here? I'm unclear about what's really going on with that. Fact five, there is no emergency to get this Dogwood Drive subdivision done. We were told that we are one of the three best places in the United States to live, and we were also told that Mr. Cooper's development had met the minimum standards. Now, if I'm putting in the first subdivision in a city of Bella Vista, and I want to make it the best thing possible, do I want to be considered having just minimum standards? I hope not. I hope that's not what Bella Vista citizens want. We want the best. We want to be a showcase. So if there are some questions, I think the board has to answer these. And the other concern that I have with the fact was when they rewrite the subdivision and they were talking about the townhouses or the houses, I heard the city attorney say, "We can write it with or, or, or." I don't know what or, or, or means. And I think our city attorney needs to give the rewrite-up that he has to our attorney so that we can look at it and we can judge if it's something that all of us can use and protect all of us. Is there anything else? I don't think so. Ambiguity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Lonnie Jay? I think that's Purple Heart as well. Linda Lloyd?
Hi, my name's Linda Lloyd. I live at 102 Fairway Drive, and I'm speaking in reference to the fence and accessory structure ordinance that you'll be considering this evening. I totally support this ordinance as it relates to the normal, average Bella Vista village lot. I feel this ordinance is totally inappropriate for two situations. One is, there are a lot of properties that are in the city of Bella Vista but outside the village, such as Mountain Springs Estates, where lots of times the houses are in the center of the lot, and the lot is surrounded with a fence. There are many accessory structures in those front yards that do not cause any adverse marketability to neighbors, and in fact, are the normal type of thing when you have multiple acres. In addition, my property, this is a drawing of my property, and all of the crosshatched area would be undevelopable without a variance if this ordinance is passed. That means the phases that I have put together for my dream property would all require a variance in order for me to build my accessory structures and my fence, even though they would not be visible from any other property or from the road. Each time I did that, I would have to hand-fill out 65 certified mail return receipts, pay $7 apiece, pay for a hearing, pay for a sign for the four different things that I intended to build on that property, which again, would not be visible from a street. I think that is an incredible imposition to me. I have seven and a half acres. I am in the village. My property is Zoned R3. Or to all the people who live outside the village but within the city of Bella Vista. The easy solution to this is to have the ordinance only apply to properties Zoned R1, which is single-family residential. And that would solve my opposition, and I believe it's good for the village, but not for the larger parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Burris?
Good evening. My name's Paul Burris, 67 Dogwood Drive. We understand there's a lot of pressure to have this development pushed through. However, if pushing through this fast ends up negatively impacting our community, it's not the right thing to do. As a reminder, our group has always pushed for a proper development. In fact, we're proud of the concessions the developer has made due to our involvement. The reality is Cooper has a much better product because of it. I want to make it clear that no misinformation has been presented by our group. We hired an attorney. We've consulted with other professionals to ensure that our points are not only good for the community, but they're accurate and uphold the intent of the Bella Vista code. There is no question, as raised in the work session last week, as to who owns Dogwood Drive. County tax records show it. Cooper's license survey showed it. And Cooper was counting on the area to help increase their density numbers last year when they filed for the variance. There's no misinformation being presented here by our side. The traffic count exceeds the number requiring a 50-foot right-of-way, required by the master street plan, your master street plan. We have real numbers, not estimates, that account for Drake Courts and Town Home Association vehicles from Upper Dogwood. You can tell Cooper, and you can, this council can, and every other developer, will not accept the responsibility and maintenance of a road until it is brought up to code and approved to our standards. The same would hold true to any development with poor paving conditions such as we have, period. Our citizens should not be asked for the road Cooper owns. We must not set this kind of precedent, especially on our first PZD. We know all of you are under pressure by the developer to approve this, but let's do it right. Unfortunately, the only code, all our code allows is to remand this to planning. So let's remand it to planning and let them address the traffic count as it pertains to safety concerns that would be reduced if governed by the master street plan. Who's going to pay for Dogwood, taxpayers or Cooper? A true landscape plan is called by the BZD, and we're willing to donate the one we paid for if Cooper can't afford it. I respectfully ask you not to approve or fast-track this application. There's not one good reason to waive a third reading or invoke any kind of emergency clause. The promised economic boost will take decades to pay off if the taxpayers are left with paying for what is left out of this settlement. How can another 30, 60, or 90 days matter when you consider the long-term effect of this development? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Gene Grozclose. I represent Cooper. And just wanted to say that we've really gone above and beyond compliance with all the existing ordinances regarding the PZD development. We've worked hard for months to meet all the requirements of the planning commission, and they have agreed that we have met all of the ordinance, and we've met all their additional requirements as well. And they've recommended it to you for your approval and consent. We also, I'd like to point out that during the planning commission meetings, they first raised the concern that possibility of two houses being adjacent to each other that looked similar. And we drafted language. We included it in the PZD pursuant to their request. And they agreed that it, in fact, prevented that from happening. And I think staff has also indicated that they believe that that prevents two houses identical being built adjacent to each other. So I just wanted to point that out. And also, you know, we have worked with the people objecting to our development, trying to address their objections for months. And our experience unfortunately has been, when we address one objection, another objection appears the next meeting. And, you know, we have a growing concern that really the intent may be to stop any development across the street from the Dogwood residents. And that's a really major concern of ours. What we would also like to point out is that Cooper built most of the homes that the people that object to the future development live in. We built the golf course that's adjacent to these homes. We built the country club that overlooks these homes. And, you know, we've worked diligently to contribute to the community, and we've built the community that all you guys have appreciated so much that you chose to move here. And we want to offer yet another product, a quality product, that will enhance the community overall. So with that said, we would like to request that the second reading, you suspend the rules, the second reading be waived, and that you vote to approve this project this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Beth Castle?
I think it's already been covered that I just want to talk about, so I wanted to...
Fair enough. Thank you. Debbie Reynolds, or Richards, I'm sorry.
I was wondering if I might delegate. She can delegate for three minutes to me for total six. I have a four-minute presentation for you.
Okay, do you want to do that in your slot?
Please.
Okay.
She can delegate for time to me, and then my three minutes also.
We need to move to suspend the rules and permit it because that's what we did last time.
I move we suspend the rules and allow him the four minutes.
Do I have a second, or?
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My name is... My name is Tom Richards, and I live at 63 Dogwood Drive. I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the Country Club Villas ordinance... I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the Country Club Villas ordinance before you. My first point I want to have on record is how proud I have been to represent these homeowners along Dogwood Drive. It has been my pleasure, and I thank you. I'll open by stating that we as a neighborhood decided long ago that we couldn't stop this development. It was suggested in the applicant's Board of Zoning Adjustment hearing for this property about a year ago that we were trying to stop the development. Unprompted, most in the room quickly responded with a loud and emphatic "no." Please don't ever paint us as a group of individuals that are trying to stop this development. We want and expect responsible development anywhere in Bella Vista, and that is the sole basis for us being here throughout this process and providing you with valuable information for your consideration. May Christy change his actions from a year ago, originally encouraging corporations among all involved to achieve responsible development of this parcel. Now it appears he intimidates those who might ask any meaningful constructive questions about the application. It's become apparent that it's a one-sided process because he did not empower his community development staff nor planning board to critically review this application, and is suggesting that you do the same. You're being told that the applicant has met the minimum requirements of the PZD process. While that is true, it is also true that the community development staff, planning board, and mayor are accepting the minimum requirements based solely on what is being presented by the applicant in their PZD documents. In a PZD, the minimum standards don't provide for responsible development, and yet you're being encouraged to approve this application as though the minimum standards reflect responsible development. You're being asked to ignore the intent of a PZD as provide for responsible development in the form of a comprehensive landscaping plan for the entire parcel. What is presented in this PZD is basically three trees on each lot as a landscaping plan. I have personally seen more constructive staff and planning board discussions about landscaping its cell towers in Bella Vista than this high-profile, first-ever PZD for the city of Bella Vista. You're being asked to ignore the intent of a PZD as provide for a development that minimally disrupts natural features in the form of a tree preservation plan. What you are proving is a detail to protect trees during construction yet allowing existing mature trees that are irreplaceable to be destroyed during this development. You're being asked to ignore facts regarding the actual traffic counts on Dogwood Drive as it directly relates to the city's master street plan and accept a mathematical number. You shouldn't be accepting this PZD for what is being presented to you now, you should anticipate how this will be used and misused in the future. This PZD and property may be sold to others the day after it's approved. That purchaser may not care about Bella Vista at all. If you don't consider how it can fail in the future, you'll probably obligate others to problems. In the future, the community development staff and the Bella Vista legal team may try to enforce your intent of this PZD and come back to you and state, "That was the intent when you approved it, but because this PZD is poorly structured, the original intent is unenforceable." Whatever in front of you is what you are accepting. It's now being presented as an emergency as the basis for an approval. It's not being presented as a thoughtful PZD considering responsible development of the property. This application should be remanded back to the community development staff with specific instructions that they be empowered to critically review this entire PZD application, providing for responsible development, and continuing empowerment in reviews by any entity after that. Thank you.
Linda Burris? Colonel Parsons?
I'm Jim Parsons, and I'm chairman of the Bella Vista Patriots, and I live on Lake Avalon. I want to be right up front and say it right away, Mayor, I like you, and I like the job you're doing, and city council think you're doing a great job. Thank you. And the city itself, we were one of the ones that forerunners to get in place, and we liked the city concept, and we like it. As patriots, we get a lot of complaints, and we get a lot of comments and opinions, probably just like you do. One that I got was from a lady moved here from Iowa, and she came to the city council and said, "May I build a building?" And they said, "Sure." Showed her the blueprints, looked fine to us, "Build." She had the slab poured, steel frame, nice siding on it, barely see it over the top of a roof, yet the ACC did see it, and they came and they looked at it, and they said, "No, you're out of compliance. You've got a plastic siding on that thing, you're going to have to tear it down." $2,000. She tore it down, but the plastic in 1965 is not what a plastic siding is today. It's kind of a PCV-type of material, it's very strong, and the building and whatnot, thing wrong with it. But the point I'm trying to make is, we have too much bureaucracy in Bella Vista. We have a city, we have a POA, we've got an ACC, we've got Cooper, and any time you get ready to build something, to do something, you've got to check with all four of those groups. It ought to be just the city, it ought to be just a regular like any other town in America. You go to the city, and if the city gives you authority to do it, then you've got the authority to do it, and shouldn't be surprised by some other entity that they have a rule that makes you tear it down. And so what I'm asking you tonight is, will you partner and will you help the patriots? We want to get rid of the ACC. We just don't see a need for two groups ruling on the same thing. It gets very confusing, and people who move here are very surprised by it, and the one example I gave you is just one. We've got a lot of those. Thank you for what you do, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Leona Reynolds? We have some extra time, anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Carroll, I live at 62 Portsmouth Drive. Couple of things, I'll be brief. Number one, I haven't been to one of these meetings in a long time, and I recognize some of the same faces that I used to see, and I want to say thanks for doing the work. I'm a former volunteer with the TV station, and I haven't been with him for about a year or so, and I wanted to remind you that they are there. This happens, you can see a record of this, because they do this every month. This is a lot of work, and I ask you to not forget them. There's two things that I'd like to talk about. One is the issue of the size of these industrial buildings that are going in. Two of them happened in my neighborhood. If I had known about it in advance, I would have tried to prevent these. Nice people, I like these people, I like doing shop work myself, I don't hold anything against these people for putting in these buildings, but the only real thing Bella Vista has, aside from the obvious amenities, is the beauty. We've got trees, and we've got a beautiful place, even the people in Bentonville talk about it. "Oh, you live in Bella Vista, it's so beautiful there." But it's not beautiful for the people that live across the street from the new building that just went in. It's a giant thing, it's kind of ironic. There are rules that say that you can't see the RV park there, but you can put in a giant blimp hangar to put the RV in, and that's okay. It seems a little ironic to me, because these buildings, there's two in my neighborhood that are large. Okay? The last thing that I want to mention is, I come from a family of civil engineers. I went into mechanical, electromechanical, but my dad and his father talked this stuff, and I picked up some of it along the way. One of the things that I see about Bella Vista, that I see as a problem that's going to haunt you big time if it's not addressed, is curb and gutter. You can't pave the roads and expect them to stay in good quality with asphalt if you don't have proper concrete curb and gutter. As you develop the community, you add a linear dimension to the number of miles of road that you have to maintain. Already, the roads aren't, on my street are kind of poorer. They repaved some of it, and then they quit. I was a little surprised at that, but you'll never be able to continue to expand the community and be able to maintain all the roads. You're going to eventually be unable to keep up with the degradation without the proper concrete curb and gutter. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Okay, we'll move along to the approval of the February 22nd minutes. Are there any errors or omissions? All right, I'd like a motion, please, to approve. So moved. Second?
Second.
We'll use a show of hands, all those in favor? Again, same sign. Move on to the financial report. We do have some copies at the back by the door for you. We now have it also posted on our webpage, and we will continue to do so monthly so you can see it. In a nutshell, the general fund on the expenses side is 271,000 favorable, in other words, we're underrunning the expenses, and the revenue is 171 over the budget. On the street side, the revenue is down 2.8,000, so that's $2,800, and the expenses are underrunning by 24,000. So again, we're in good shape, and the reserve is currently sitting at 7.2 million. If there are no questions, our city treasurer is here tonight. I would entertain a motion to approve the February financials, please. So moved.
Second.
We do hands? All right, we'll do a show of hands. All those in favor?
Six.
Same sign, thank you. Okay, next is a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay, the first ordinance is amending the city of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as Benton County Parcels, 16-702, 16-002, and 16-702, 26-001 from R1 residential, single-family, and a portion of Benton County Parcel, 16-702, 22-000 from P1 open space to PZD Planned Zoning District for the Country Club Villas Development and for other purposes. This is the second reading. I'd like to entertain a motion to move to third and final reading. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, the question has come up about the road more than once. Has there been some kind of agreement that when some of the construction is finished, or as construction is going on, or when it's totally finished, that the road will be put back at least to good a shape it currently is in?
Yeah, the road is currently fair, and as we talked about in our work session, our ordinance is silent. It doesn't address it at all.
I understand that, but that's not what I'm asking, is, you know, has anybody made any arrangements or talked to anybody about putting the road up back to where it was or is when they finish or halfway through the construction, whatever the case may be?
No, I wouldn't want to bring it back to where it is now, it's fair. I would prefer to bring it up to green and put it into our street plan.
Our expense, Cooper's expense, or 50/50?
It'd be our expense.
Okay.
If I understand correctly, our expense only goes to the center line of the road, and then the, to the center line, the developer goes to the center line, we take the other half as I was explaining to me.
I don't believe, do our ordinances say that, Chris?
That's how you explain it to me.
Chris, you need to talk to him about the right-of-way dedication and all that.
The plans for the Planned Zoning District in front of you this evening call for improvements to the edge on the west side of Dogwood Drive. That would include expansion of the road surface to bring it into, with our requirement for 20 feet of paved driving surface, as well as an asphaltic shoulder as the plans indicate. That's about one foot wide. So you're ranging anywhere from, let's call it six inches to up to as much as three feet along the western edge of the road. So the road would be expanded, that would be at the developer's cost.
But only that far?
That is correct.
Okay, that's not what I was explaining the other day, though, was it?
Wasn't with you?
Yeah, you were right there at the meeting, we sat down and talked about it. We talked about doing, they would do their half from the center line? We would take the other half?
But then, if you remember, we went back and checked the ordinance, the ordinance is silent. It doesn't say.
Doesn't require it.
Doesn't require it, that's right.
Should it?
It's not a question of whether it should or not, it doesn't say that we can do it. So it falls back on the city. Is that not correct?
So we're going to pick up the leftovers and deal with it?
Well, if you want to call it leftovers, it depends what the condition of the road is going to be like, because you're going to have heavy machinery on it either way.
Exactly, my point.
Okay? We have nothing in the ordinance that says half.
Our standards require for this road to be upgraded to their side of the road to current standards within the subdivision ordinance. As we've indicated to the council on our work session, that includes 40 feet of right-of-way dedication, 20 foot of asphaltic, I'm sorry, pavement out there, as well as that shoulder treatment that I spoke of, and ditch improvements.
Okay. So we are going to inherit the road or be granted the right-of-way, or whatever you call it, at some time during or after the construction has begun, after the construction has begun, and when the construction is completed, we will be responsible to bring it back up to agreement?
We already have that obligation already.
But in other developments where we already own the right-of-way, we are only responsible for half of the pavement to the center line from the development?
Chris, are they going to have to improve and dedicate their half of the road?
They're going to have to dedicate the entirety of the road right-of-way.
Right, because it's entirety, but I'm talking about, the improvement is to half, but the dedication is all of it.
The improvement is to the edge of the road. Let's be very clear on this. The improvements that the developer is being required to perform under this ordinance is to increase it in width to 20 feet of pavement, as well as that one foot of asphaltic shoulder.
Alderman Anderson?
The one question I had, the one comment that I heard tonight that I guess I had not heard before, or wasn't paying attention maybe, I'm not sure, the requirement for right-of-way, what's the breaking point car-wise or traffic-wise to get to 50 feet? And that may be a tough question, and I don't have my book, I don't know if you do.
Let me explain where that comes from. That comes from our master street plan.
Yep.
Each one of our streets are classified among five different categories. Currently, Dogwood is classified as a residential street. That, excuse me, that level of classification requires about 750 car vehicle trips per day under the master street plan, okay? The next category up is a sub-collector, and that ranges, I believe it's about 3,200. That's off the cuff without looking at my plan. Now, what, and that sub-collector classification would be required to have 50 feet of right-of-way. The numbers that we have seen from the engineer for the consultant, the traffic engineer, says that we have less than 750 vehicle trips per day post-development. That's his professional opinion on that matter. You have presented other evidence and normal traffic counts and methods that I'm not sure entirely how they were procured. I understand there was a counting device involved, but I was not part of that, nor honestly, I haven't seen the actual results. So I've only heard numbers. But regardless, that is where the breaking point is, Alderman.
Did the study that Cooper did, did they include any cars that currently would come off of Dogwood Drive? Or did they just consider what's on there now? Or what's going to be there? As you get 20-some houses now, you're going to put 48, you know, did they also add a few for those coming up and down regular Dogwood or not?
As I understand it from the traffic study that I've read, the traffic engineer made an assumption, lower Dogwood by the golf course would funnel out onto 340 from Dogwood Drive. Drive. So that would include all the homes that currently exist along lower Dogwood as well as the development post, post-construction. The upper portion of Dogwood was assumed to flow out onto Cooper.
I just wondered how many of his study included the lower part of Dogwood?
That's correct.
Because what the people there who live have come up with, they're, they're right at the 750 and a few cars more. Wouldn't it be advantageous to maybe go the extra 10 feet just because of future in there? Or are we just gonna take it where we are today? And don't get me wrong, I'm gonna vote for this when the time comes up. I'm just hearing some of their concerns.
Sure, and let me, let me address that. I would tell you that the wider the road, the faster the speed.
You don't have to tell me that, I did that for 39 years.
Okay, so, in my, in my professional opinion, acquiring more right-of-way and planning to build future road expansion is sort of antithetical to what we're trying to develop here.
You have to make the road wider because you have more right-of-way?
Not necessarily.
Well, then, okay, so that would take care of your traffic problem, your speed problem.
But if the right-of-way is there, you do have the opportunity to expand it.
Yes, you do, but then what if you have to?
That's true. But, to, to the point, we would, as planning staff, advocate against a wider road for the safety of not only the residents that are out there, but what future construction may occur.
Well, if future construction does occur, then it won't be white enough. Because if you're gonna cut, if you're gonna cut the minimum now, as you just said, future construction ain't gonna work.
There's no place else left to build.
And that would be a safer environment for everybody. If we accept a narrower standard, a lower, a lower speed on that road, we don't want people driving 35, 40 miles an hour through a residential neighborhood. It gets people hurt.
They do.
I'm just thinking about, you know, okay, so your, your numbers are good, but, you know, if anything else goes on down there or something else happens and more people come in or the traffic picks up, whatever the case may be, you know, why do the, you know, why do the minimum now if we have a feeling like everything else does, it's gonna Just asking.
We don't want that road wider.
Who's we?
Your planning staff. And, and I bet you, I bet you the neighborhood would agree with me that we don't want cars going faster down that road.
Well, then there's no proof one way or the other.
A narrow road will not prevent them going faster.
Mayor, you need to make sure that people are recognizing that the crowd is not interjecting into the meeting.
Do we have other comments or questions, please?
I'm still concerned about splitting the cost on the repaving of the road after the work is done. Right now, it's not our property. It's Mr. Cooper's property, has been for, from the get-go. Nice that he is going to give it to the city. We've, we've kind of been taking care of it for him anyway in some ways, as far as plowing it for snow and things like that. But it would be nice to have that street brought into the fold, so to speak, in a healthy condition as opposed to being run over by trucks for three years and then having to be repaired and built, built back up from the ground up to meet our current standards. I think the numbers I, that I was quoted the last time we visited about this was, if we did 50-50, it would be roughly 18,000. If we did the entire thing, it'd be roughly 36, 36,000 over a three-year period. Now, I know we're gonna offset the majority of that, if not all or more of it, in tax revenues off of sales tax of the projects, property tax of the projects. It's just a matter of how far we're going to want to push Mr. Cooper to get this development underway, get it done, and whether he's gonna be willing to do anything else after he has to fight through this one. I don't think we want to alienate that progress. As long as we understand what we're getting into.
Sure. Other comments, sir?
Let me point out one thing. We have, since we've become a city, have taken over all of the development of roads and we've had similar problems, although not for a concentrated development like this. But take Weatherby, for instance, on the east side. We had a rash of building going on Weatherby about six or seven years ago, and I think they built about 14 houses on Weatherby. The traffic tore up Weatherby. We had to pave the whole thing. Any place that they go out and build a house out in the sticks, and it may be a mile from the rest of the pavement, we paved to get to that one house. That's considerably more than we're paving to get to 48 houses. So I guess I don't see that we should be changing that kind of rule to any great extent unless we're gonna change it all the way around. And we've got some roads in Bella Vista where you can't get a four-wheel drive on to start building the house yet, that we're gonna have to do something with. So somebody needs to take a look at all of that, but right now, we don't have anything in the ordinances that take that on. And you can say what you want about this road and who it belongs to, but as far as I'm concerned, it's belonged to the city ever since I signed the documents way back in 2008 and we've plowed it ever since. Taking on curbs and gutters, that I've heard several times tonight. Curbs and gutters would be great if we had a drainage system where the water could get off out of those curbs and gutters and go somewhere, but the Bella Vista does not have that system. The other problem with curbs and gutters is our snow plowing. As much snow plowing as we do some years, this year was lucky, and I hope all the rest of them that I live here are just like this one, but I doubt it. It's very difficult to plow a, a narrow street with curbs and gutters. There's no place for the snow to go, there's no place for the plow to go, and we'd be building more curbs than we could afford.
I was only trying to clarify the information I had earlier and it pretty much answered the question.
Any other comments or questions?
I did have a amendment that I had proposed earlier about this and I withdrew it Saturday when I talked to Jason, so. That settles my hash, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, then I'd entertain a motion to amend the proposed ordinance by adding an emergency clause at the end, which will read as follows. Section 13 emergency clause, the need to immediately approve this planned zoning district is crucial to the economic and commercial interest of the city. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance being immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall become effective upon its passage as provided by law. And amending the title to read as follows, an ordinance amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as Benton County parcels 16-702, 16-002, and 16-702, 26-001 from R1 residential single family and a portion of Benton County parcel 16-702, 22-000 from P1 open space to PZD planned zoning district for the Country Club Villas Development declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second, or?
Point, just one other quick question. Chris, how long, you say we've been moving paper on this? About 14, 18 months?
About 14 months now. A second, or?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
This is just on the motion to amend.
Correct.
Right. Roll call vote. Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
No.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
No.
Carried 4-2.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading of the amended ordinance.
I thought you just added.
No, we just, we just added the emergency clause.
That's right.
So may I have a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading of the amended ordinance?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Morgan.
No.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak. Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor, you may choose to vote on the motion to suspend the rules, it's tied.
I will vote yes.
So it's gonna pass 4 to 3 with the mayor voting in favor.
Okay.
Not meaning to interject, but mayor, you need to read the title a third time and make sure we read the amended title.
Third reading, an ordinance amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as Benton County parcels 16-702, 16-002, and 16-702, 26-001 from R1 residential single family and a portion of Benton County parcel 16-702, 22-000 from P1 open space to PZD planned zoning district for the Country Club Villas Development declaring an emergency and for other purposes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
And this is a motion, you need to clarify, this is a motion for final approval?
Right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
All right, now I'm confused. It doesn't take much.
Okay, this is the third and final reading.
Okay, but it also creates the emergency clause.
No, the emergency clause also always has to be voted on separately, so there'll be another motion and a vote to approve the emergency clause after this.
After this.
So if you, if you are in, just to inform the members, if you are in favor of this but don't want an emergency clause, you can vote yes and then vote no at the next vote.
There'll be another vote coming up.
There's another vote after this on the emergency clause.
All right.
All right, on the motion to adopt, Alderman Morgan.
No.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
No.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Mayor, you may choose to vote, it's tied 3 to 3.
Yes.
Ordinance passes 4 to 3. And now we need to deal with the emergency clause.
Next is a motion to approve the emergency clause. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mayor, let me advise before we vote here, just so everyone's clear and we don't have any surprises. State law's a little weird, as you all know. If it comes to a tie on the emergency clause, the mayor is not authorized to vote. So a tie on the emergency clause would mean the emergency clause fails. Okay? To just so, you know, all right.
Well, I guess I'm confused because in one of your previous things that
Right.
It also said declaring an emergency.
Right, that was on an amendment to the base ordinance, but the emergency clause has to be finally approved separately and the mayor does not get a, a tie vote breaker on that.
Clear as mud?
Yes. I understand that.
Okay.
Now we're voting to do this.
If we don't do it, it's 30 days.
Okay?
Okay, this is on the emergency, approval of the emergency clause.
Right. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
No.
Alderman Anderson.
No.
Alderman King.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Fails.
Emergency qualified.
But it still takes effect in 30 days, right?
60.
60 days.
60.
The next ordinance is an ordinance amending section 1820B of the municipal code regulating the dumping of tree cuttings and other materials and for other purposes. And this is the second reading, Chris? First?
First reading.
The next ordinance is amending sections 2-106 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to limit the so-called special meetings of the city council. This too is a first reading.
Mayor, just, I think you misread that.
I'm sorry.
It's subjects of called special meetings, not so-called special meetings.
I didn't catch that. I'll read it again.
Read it one more time.
That's why I put this ordinance.
Amending section 2-106 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to limit the subjects of called special meetings of city council. Thank you. The next is also a first reading and it's amending section 103, 48C of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista concerning key box requirements. Everybody remembers that discussion? The next is the second reading. An ordinance amending municipal code section 109, 166, regulate, regulating accessory structures in section 109-248, regulating fence location and for other purposes.
Mayor, I think this is first reading on this one.
Is it first?
It's first reading, yes.
I apologize. If you remember at the work session, Alderman Flynn offered to work on revising, and I believe everybody has a copy. Alderman Flynn, I'm gonna let you take it from here.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll just give you a little summary of what the changes are from the original proposal to this. The original proposal talks about accessory buildings being at least as far back as the front plane of the house, and this talks about them being equal with the rear plane of the house. It also pursuant, partially pursuant to Frank Anderson's suggestion, it has some different rules for different size lots. The size for, well, the one that came out of the planning commission eliminated totally any limitation of size. And I indicated I wanted to put the size back in there. It used to be 720 square feet, which is 36 by 20, which is pretty big. So after I studied it for a while, I proposed for a lot of less than one acre, it'd be 420 square feet. And where I got that number is that's 20 feet by 21 feet, and that's the size of a double garage with extra storage space around it. It's bigger than, so that's a pretty big accessory structure for just a little city lot, I believe. And then if you have one acre or more, I made it 840 square feet. And if you have four acres or more, the maximum is 1,680 square feet. The other thing that varies, you know, I wasn't really active on the fence side of it, but the planning commission came up with a rule that was essentially no fences in the front yard. And in this proposal, if you have one acre or four acres, you can have a fence in the front yard. And a couple little side points, we made the fence a 3.2 feet maximum height in the front yard. And the reason for that is the building department can give you a 25% variance, so really that's four feet. That's what we're going for, it was four feet high. And similarly, I forgot to mention on the height of the building, you know, it used to be 25 feet, we made it 22 and a half feet because the building department can give you two and a half, they can give you a 10% variance on the height, so that gives you the 25 feet. So that's why it says 22 and a half, it used to say 25. But actually it says, you know, it said 25 or the highest part of the house, whichever is left, and this one's 22 and a half feet. But I wanted to explain to you why it was a little bit different, because I found out they have that 10% variance.
Just, let me, let me clarify. He's moving to amend it, we really need to have a motion and a second and then have the debate on, on John's proposal.
Sure.
Just to make the order of procedure correct.
Okay.
So he can, I mean, he's still stating what his motion is and what the changes are.
So I should, I'll make a motion for an amendment as written here.
Any second?
Second.
Now you can.
All right, Alderman Wozniak.
Is this for, I can build up to 480 feet on a lot with a house on it? Or does this apply to the lot I own next door? I got two lots side by side, okay?
Yeah.
So I'm restricted to my second lot, the 480 feet?
420.
400, whatever it is. Or is the 420 feet and all these other measurements, well, that's the one that really matter, I guess, because that was a bigger, but is that just for on the lot? because that one was bigger, but is that just for on the lot where the house is? Or I can only get that big on my extra lot?
No, it's on the extra lot also.
Okay.
Unless you're more than an acre.
Well, most places here, that's not going to cut it, I mean, Linda's got a few others, but yeah, okay.
Alderman Anderson?
The front plane of the house is the other lot also? Front plane of what house?
No, it's the rear plane.
Or the rear plane of what house?
Well.
I got two lots.
Sure.
I own two lots and there's a house on both sides.
Uh huh.
My house and somebody else's house. Which house do I have to meet the rear plane of on my second lot? If I want to put an accessory structure up?
I would, well, I defer to the attorney, I guess, but I would think it would be your house.
We had some language during the drafting process that talked about the lot or the combination of lots that you have together with the house on it. And it was brought to my attention and Chris may, I want to chime in on this. We already have some language in our code that talks about homes that are built on multiple lots. And Chris, would you tell them, and so we're going to use that and use that language and rely on what's elsewhere in the code to address that particular issue?
I would just echo what Alderman Flynn and Attorney Kelly are saying is that from an enforcement point of view, we would have to look at land under the common ownership in total. So those regulations regarding rear, that were setback from the rear of the whole house. If your house is here and you got nothing but lot behind you, you'd be restricted to erecting that accessory structure behind the house. The rear plane of the house, as the language says.
Behind my house, not behind the next lot over.
I'm looking at your property when I'm reviewing your building permit.
Okay, and I can do that all the way down the street? I own six lots. I can build a storage shelter on each, on each lot? As long as it's behind the rear plane of my house? And let, and let my buddy park his new Cadillac in the two garages down at the end?
I don't believe the language of the ordinance or the amendment calls for any sort of limitation on the number of structures.
That's kind of what I was afraid of. So I think you could start a business with that ordinance, the way it's written right now. So I'm not sure we don't need some, a few more words. On the corner lots, if I understand correctly, you would have to build the storage lot either behind the house or on the side away from the corner. Well, it'd have to be behind the house, but it, it couldn't, could be directly behind the house or in the corner away from the side lot, is that right? You're taking away an awful lot of lot from somebody's use on the corner lots. I think the way this is read, I'm not sure what the intent was. And that's why I'm asking the questions. Other question I have is barns and stables. We talk about barns and stables, I'm not sure we have a good definition of them. Up in the first part, we talk about, we can do things except for a stable, but it doesn't say about a barn. I would say a barn houses animals as much as a stable does probably, and I think that's probably the intent. That's why we don't want it attached to the house, but we didn't say barns. So those are just two or three things that I had questions about and I don't know what the intent was.
Okay.
I have a question about the back plane of the house. Does it have to be behind the back plane of the house or?
Even width, the way I read it.
Even width.
Even width is the way I read it.
It's like a spill too, so you could have it even with that plane or further back.
Oh. I think when we remove the front plane of the house, we limit a lot of places in Bella Vista that would not be able to build.
Unfortunately, we live in an area where we don't have nice flat level square blocks to work with. We have pretty much a rural topography. And the way this is phrased, by limiting the location behind the rear plane of the house has, that it's going to make a lot of land completely undevelopable for people. For example, what Mrs. Lloyd was saying, that's going to be the case in a lot of people's places. And that's simply not fair.
Well, I think if we had the height limitation, we would avoid some of the issues that we've seen recently with the tall buildings, even with the front plane of the house, that are taller than the house. And by the way, Alderman Flynn, I appreciate the time you put into this. I, it's not a job any of us wanted and you did a great job.
Yeah. Well, Jason Kelly and Chris Sanderson deserve a lot of credit, they're very helpful. It is tricky because there's so many different scenarios come up, but I was thinking about that Lamborn Drive, you know, it's, even with the front plane. And the only thing the proposal came from planning commission did was keep it from being higher than the house. And I don't think the neighbors would be very happy with that particular structure just because it wasn't higher than, it is higher than the house now, but even if it wasn't, I don't think they'd be happy anyway. It's pretty darn large.
It's like trying to grab hold of Jell-O.
We have another question on?
So as, as this is written then, and Linda over here is going to be S O L to do anything on her property unless she comes back every time and does all these certified letters to all the neighbors. She's probably got the biggest lot that's actually inside what used to be the village, which is now the city. But you're going to also, with this, you're going to hit some of these farm guys where the, where the guy's got his beels and stuff and a couple of other places. And you're going to have to hit them too. Are there any kind of exception or something, or like she said, something about R one or R three?
Well, you know, we, we made a different size, a couple of people have mentioned things to me since I wrote this. We made a different size, you know, with larger lots, you could do a better size. And we could think about whether this front plane of the house stuff should apply to real large lots also.
Okay, so her front plane of the house is a couple hundred feet off the road.
Yeah.
And, you know, she goes behind the house, then she's in a lake.
Yeah.
And she's got all this property, she literally can't see, you can barely see the house, you have nowhere to look.
Yeah.
So there's nothing for those folks, except coming back every time.
Well, she could do everything all at once and just come back once.
Uh huh. You going to help repeat for that?
I think there is a way to work around this. I spoke to Jason this afternoon, this morning rather, and rather than going with a zoning situation, I think we need to send this back and let it get a little bit more fine tuned on the size of buildings, location of buildings, based on, more on the topography of the lots and the houses and the size of the lots where the houses are located or trying to build. For fences or for accessory buildings. Just for example, if some gentleman wants to, if a family wants to move here, they have a hobby of restoring motorcycles, they want to build a good sized accessory building to carry out that hobby. Under this particular adaption of the, under this amendment, they'd be hard for us to find a place to put a building that size to accommodate that on most lots in Bella Vista. And I don't think that's fair to tell a person, you can't portray, you can't pursue your hobby just because someone else tells you you can't build a big enough building to do it. I looked at the buildings that are built on Brompton and Lamborn and they are pretty nicely built buildings. They're not slapped together junk. And personally, I've seen junk, I've built junk back in my day when I was younger. But that's only because I couldn't afford a nicely built prefab building like that, so.
Okay, do we have other comments?
I think this needs to be fine tuned a little bit more.
Okay, at the moment, we have a motion on the floor. If you do a roll call vote, please, everybody remember the motion?
Motion was to add the amendment.
Add John's amendment.
Right.
Right.
Add John's amendment, it was made and seconded. Alderman Morgan?
No.
Alderman Wozniak?
No.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman King?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Fails.
Okay, Mayor, could I, just for the benefit of the council, because I did have a conversation with Alderman King this morning, it may be helpful to the rest of you to hear what I said on this particular issue. One of the concerns was that you paint with too broad a brush and you come up with a set of rules and this is a conversation that's come up and then you, you force people to have to get variances, which can be expensive and, and all of this. One option that I just came across in my head as we were talking would be come up with some regulations and this could be complicated, but we, it could be done. Just because it's complicated doesn't mean it couldn't be done. Is to say if your intent is for these sheds to typically be in the backyard, then there, then you could say they have to be built in the, in the rear, as you've discussed. But if that rear area that's buildable is of a certain size or less, then you can put it somewhere else. And then you could potentially even put it in the front, but you could also require there be certain buffering included, like screening or something along those lines to somehow ameliorate the negative impact that that could potentially have. And you could build all that into an ordinance that would not require someone to get a variance. They could do it all within the scope of the ordinance. But in order to do that, we need to have a clear idea, and this is just something I'd throw out to all of you and I hope you take it in the intent that I mean it. Let's decide what is the problem that you're trying to solve and then what it is you think will solve it. And then, you know, certainly the staff and myself and whomever of you wants to work on it can come up with some words to accomplish that. I don't want us to get lost in the procedure of how it's worded because we'll certainly word it the way it needs to be to accomplish what you want to accomplish. But I think there's a way, like I said, it could be complicated. It could be residentially zoned properties only, no matter what the resident, I mean, there's any number of things you could do if you've got a firm idea of how you'd like to do it. But there are ways that we could put some exceptions built in that would not require the variance process and the expense of the variance. That would also take into account so many of the different topographies and sizes.
Okay. Would you like staff to take a crack at it?
I had just one more comment. I passed around some pictures that Roger Norbeck was nice enough to bring. The point being that a really large accessory structure is upsetting to the neighbors, even if it's nicely built. And, you know, Alan and I have talked about this for a while. I think we have just a natural difference of opinion. I don't think in a residential area, there should be accessory structures in the front yard, period. If you don't have a really good backyard, then you should have thought of that when you bought the place. And he feels it's okay to put accessory structure in the front yard. And everybody on the street where these were put thinks it's a horrible idea, so. And as far as not having a size limit, I think those pictures from Roger show what a, a bad idea that is. I mean, these things are, I drove down Portsmouth today, these things are absolutely gigantic. And they're on little tiny, they're bigger, they're as big, even bigger than houses. And they're on little tiny residential lots, so.
Okay, so staff, we'll take another kick at the cap. Would you like to join us again?
And when I say that, give, I'm not volunteering just to come up with something for you. I need to hear from you what you all want and we'll be happy to try and come up with something.
Come back just as it is for second reading.
Okay, it's on, it's still on, it's on first reading right now, so it'll go to second reading next month.
So we have more time to discuss.
Okay.
If there's no other comments, I'll move along.
All right.
Okay. Okay, we move from the world of ordinance, into resolution. The first is authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with A and B Construction in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars plus a three percent contingency for the construction of a sand salt storage building at the New Street.
Quiet, please.
At the New Street Department facility. As we discussed at the work session, this is part of the federal mandate on stormwater where we are no longer permitted to put sand and salt on dirt. It has to be on a cement base, cement stem walls and covered. And we would be putting this behind to the right of the new street building out on two seventy-nine. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Any discussion at all? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Alderman Wilson, yes? Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
In Q, the next resolution appointing, sorry, approving appointments to the Bella Vista Arts Council. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next resolution renaming north Ramworth Lane to Wilms Lane and south Ramworth Lane to Hutchison Lane and for other purposes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Does Jane Wilms know this has been done?
Jane Wilms knows, we've not been able to contact Arlene, she's moved to Kansas City. I did send an email to the last address, it didn't come back undelivered, but I haven't had an answer.
Well, I didn't want to say anything to Jane if this was a surprise.
No.
I thought it was a surprise, I thought it was in the newspaper.
Couldn't be too much of an issue, too many documents.
That's right.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
In Q, the next resolution amending the twenty sixteen city budget to transfer six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents in unrestricted revenue from the street department account to account number five zero five zero five hundred to library account six zero five seven four zero zero to fund the purchase of a telephone system for the Bella Vista Public Library. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Thank you, roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Final resolution of the evening is approving Bella Vista Police Department policies regarding a suspect identification process and non-consensual towing. Our police chief is here tonight, if there's any questions.
You have a new pop, copy of the non-consensual tow policy that was included that was different than what you had, we mentioned this to you at the work session. You do have the finalized version in your packet.
Alderman Anderson?
Is that finalized version similar to Rogers?
I think he's asking you, Kenny.
On the towing? On the towing? Yeah. The old one was similar to Rogers. And we found that the, the towing policy was more to regulate the wrecker services than it was the actions of the police department. We became aware of some requirements that we have policies in place before we tow the vehicles. As far as the police department are, as far as the previous ordinance, we now have an ordinance in the city that we were required to pass for state law that regulates more the towing services between our city ordinance and our state, state towing and recovery board rules and regulations.
Okay.
So it, no, this, this one was not, was not patterned after Rogers. We, we sat down, Mr. Kelly and I sat down and, and discussed what was required by the law and put that into the ordinance.
Any other questions?
The ordinance, I'm sorry.
Resolution, policy.
But we do have a pretty good system that we can throw out those that charge amazing rates.
Well, this is, this is different.
We, we cannot regulate the rates they charge, but we do require them to provide us those rates on an annual basis.
Okay.
And they cannot charge anything that is not on their rate sheet.
Okay.
I, I don't agree with some of the prices either. Yeah, I had too many calls a few years back.
Right.
We had one time there that I must have got forty phone calls.
I can possibly clarify this a little bit.
Sure.
The, this policy is geared toward more when the police can have a vehicle towed.
Yeah.
And then you're talking about, which is a very valid concern, the non-consensual towing and how that list works and how people get on that list and how those rates are disclosed. That's incorporated into this, but it's kind of a separate thing. State law has a very detailed State law has a very detailed procedure we have to follow, we can't change that, but part of that is we can adopt, we can use that if we adopt a policy that says how we're going to implement that. So this is part of getting in coordination with that, and just, we patterned this largely after Fort Smith's policy, they just redid theirs, we got a copy of it and thought it was very good, we took out things that didn't apply to us and, and made it applicable to us, and so that's where it came from.
Thank you. Q, other discussion? Roll call vote.
Probably need a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carry at six zero.
Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Monday, April eighteenth, twenty sixteen, at five thirty P M. in the city hall conference room, the next regular meeting of the city council, Monday, the twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, at six thirty P M. right here in the American Legion Hall. The Planning Commission work session will be Thursday, March thirty-first, at four thirty in the city hall conference room. The plan, uh, the Planning Commission regular meeting will be April, the eleventh, at six forty-five in the city hall conference room, and the Public Safety Committee meeting will be May, the eleventh, twenty sixteen, at nine A M. in the city hall conference room. And with that, we are.
I'm going to Little Rock Wednesday for the Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting.
This should be six, six thirty-three.
Any other comments or discussion? Thank you, we are.
The library.
You know where Tilliam is? It was changed, way down there on the backside of Chelsea.